To the Burley County Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for November. We'll call the meeting to order and start with a roll call. Marla, if you could take us through that.
Okay. Commissioner Bitner?
Here.
Commissioner Conley?
Here.
Commissioner Jarrett?
Here.
Commissioner Munson?
Here.
Commissioner Patrick?
Here.
Commissioner Rich?
Here.
Commissioner Strifel?
Here.
Commissioners Zurov?
Here.
And Chairman?
Here.
All present.
All right, thank you. We have a quorum. We'll move into approval of the October 9th, 2024, meeting minutes. I assume you all have had a chance to go through those in your packet.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to approve by Commissioner Munson, seconded by Commissioner Rich. And all in favor of approving the meeting minutes from the October 9th meeting? Say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none? All right, minutes are approved. We'll move into our consent agenda. The first line item on our consent agenda is the Rath subdivision. And Marla, if you could take us through the details of this subdivision.
Okay, good evening Commissioners. Tonight, the first item on the consent agenda is the Rath subdivision. The petitioners' developer are Linda Kip and Kevin Rath. Mark Isaac is the engineer. The location is described as part of the northwest one quarter, section four, township 138 north, range 76 west in Burley County. The project size is 153 acres. There will be four lots. Lot one will be 10 acres, lot two 96, lot three 13 acres, and lot four 29 acres. And the petitioners are requesting a call for a public hearing. The history, Burley County was approached several months ago about a parcel located in the southeast corner of 83 and Fifth Avenue. The parcel contained three lots and was zoned agricultural. The petitioners own two of the three lots and are purchasing the third lot for a total of 55 acres, more or less. A pre-application review was held. The existing lot lines did show some discrepancies between the original survey and the survey completed for the purchase of the third lot. These discrepancies were corrected in the submitted preliminary plat. The review committee did not find issues of concern. Zoning for the parcel is agricultural. The property is in Taft Township. Taft Township has zoning jurisdiction for the parcel, and they have recommended approval of the subdivision. Staff findings, this subdivision does fulfill all the requirements of Article 33 of the Burley County zoning ordinances. A paving waiver was granted by Burley County Commission at their October 7th meeting. A storm water management plan or waiver request will be submitted. The preliminary plat has been submitted to all reviewing entities. All concerns and corrections have been addressed. Zoning is agricultural. Taft Township has zoning jurisdiction and approved the zoning as is. Taft Township has been notified, and they recommend approval of the proposed subdivision. The subdivision does meet the goals and intent of the Burley County Comprehensive Plan for the orderly development in Burley County. Staff recommends the petition for a preliminary plat meets all administrative requirements of the Burley County zoning ordinances, and staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat and calling for a public hearing. The Planning and Zoning Commission can approve the preliminary plat and call for a public hearing, approve with conditions and call for a public hearing, deny the preliminary plat with reason, and table the preliminary plat for more information. Any questions?
All right, any questions for Marla before she steps away? Seeing none, thank you, Marla.
Thank you.
All right, so we have the preliminary plat and request to approve the preliminary plat and move to a public hearing on the Rath subdivision. Is there any discussion or motion on this?
How will we approve the preliminary plat and call for a public hearing?
Second.
All right, it's been moved to approve the preliminary plat and move to call for a public hearing on this matter by Commissioner Rich and seconded by Commissioner Munson. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Marla, if you could take us through a roll call vote.
The motion is to approve the preliminary plat and call for a public hearing. A yes vote means you approve the motion. No vote means you do not. Commissioner Zurov?
Yes.
Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Strifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrett?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes.
All approved?
Okay, so we have approved the Rath subdivision preliminary plat, and that will move to a public hearing likely in our next meeting. All right, the second piece of the consent agenda is the RRH subdivision. And Marla can give us some details on that.
Okay, this is the RRH subdivision, formerly known as Love's subdivision. It's on the consent agenda, and the petitioners are Love's Travel Stops and Country Stores. The engineer is CEI Engineering Dallas, Texas, and more engineering is North Dakota. The location is Sterling Township, section 21, part of the southwest one quarter, lot A, irregular plat number 291884. The project size is 19 acres, more or less, and the petitioners are requesting a public hearing. And the project description is a fuel station and restaurant. Burley County has been working with Sterling Township regarding the Love's Travel Stop and Country Store for several months. Sterling Township was approached by Love's regarding placing a fuel station on a property located on I-94. Sterling Township Board has approved the construction of the fuel station in an agricultural zoning, and Burley County has been receiving several calls from contractors regarding the permitting and inspection requirements for this site. Building, planning, and zoning staff have had several conversations with Sterling Township regarding the requirements needed for the state of North Dakota and the developer for licensing of the fuel station. Sterling Township does not do inspections and do not have a certified building official to sign off on the construction of the site. Lack of inspections on the construction of this site could be detrimental to the citizens of Sterling Township and Burley County. After several discussions with Lucas Lane, the supervising chair for Sterling Township, and approval from the Sterling Township Board, staff received permission from Sterling Township to assist them with permitting, inspections, and record keeping for the site. Staff reviewed the proposed development for an 8100-square-foot convenience store with attached 2700-square-foot restaurant, five MPDs, and associated parking, truck scale landscaping, and utilities. Burley County staff expressed to the owner's representative that the property must be platted. The property consists of 19 acres, more or less. The preliminary plat review was held on October 17th. The review committee did not find any issues of concern. A storm water management plan will be required, and the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality must give approval of the proposed septic lagoons. Sterling Township has requested to have a zoning change now to change the property from agricultural to commercial, and that will be handled by Sterling Township. It does not affect this board at this time. And this subdivision does fulfill the requirements of Article 33 of the Burley County zoning ordinances, and a storm water management plan has been requested. The preliminary plat has been submitted to all reviewing entities. All concerns and corrections have been addressed. Zoning is agricultural, but they have requested a zoning change. Sterling Township has asked for zoning change from agricultural to commercial. The subdivision does meet the requirements of the Burley County Comprehensive Plan, Article 2, Government, increase the effectiveness of government decisions in order to improve the county's physical, social, and economic environment. Objective 2, promote cooperation among Township, city, county, and state. Objective 3, emphasizing sound planning process as a means of managing future growth in the most rational, efficient manner possible. And Article 6, Business and Industry, maintain a balanced, sustained growth of commercial industry and manufacturing development in the county. Objective 1, enhance and diversify Burley County's economy. And Objective 2, promote the quality of growth of commercial uses. The petition for preliminary plat meets all the administrative requirements of the Burley County zoning ordinance. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat and calling for a public hearing. And you can approve the preliminary plat, call for a public hearing, approve the preliminary plat with conditions and call for a public hearing after all the conditions have been met, deny the preliminary plat with reason, and table the preliminary plat for more information. And that's all I have.
Marla, just a question. If this were to be rezoned, it would not affect the requirements of the inspections and permitting, right? There's no, would be no change to that?
No, no, that won't. It's going to be a recommendation of staff. If we do a final plat and it goes to public hearing and approved, that staff is going to recommend that the condition be that the zoning be changed before it is submitted to the county commission for approval.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Commissioners Zurov?
Just a question from Marla. So I guess I'm kind of confused as to why there's a delay in a zoning request for a project like this. Typically, when you have, what else say, no one intent for the plat, no one intent for the zoning, they don't even typically want to put the plat through without actually having that zoning at a minimum running concurrent or even zoned prior to. So I guess my question is, who ultimately has zoning jurisdiction here? I mean, does Sterling Township retain that or?
Yes, Sterling Township retains their zoning jurisdiction. And at first, they were going to just leave it as is, as agricultural. But I guess after discussions, they decided to request a zoning change to commercial, which will fit the building and the use of the land better than having it agriculturally zoned.
Right, because I know, I don't think within Burley County Planning or within Burley County zoning ordinance, a truck stop like that, I mean, that is obviously a large commercial enterprise is allowed in agriculturally zoned land.
Yeah, but we don't have jurisdiction over that. That's Sterling, they get to make the decision on that.
Okay, so will we be seeing an application for rezoning then? Or do we administratively handle that for Sterling Township then?
We don't. This board doesn't. That goes through the Sterling Township Board to approve that. I have offered to help them if they, because it's been a while. I don't know if they've done one.
Okay, because I guess my only concern is knowing the intent of the plat for being a truck stop going through on what is currently zoned agricultural land.
Yeah, that has been our recommendation from the beginning, is to change it to commercial. But it's not our jurisdiction, we can only offer suggestions. So, but we are going to put a condition on the final plat now that we know that this is what Sterling Township wants. We're going to put a condition that it not be submitted to the county commission until the zoning has been changed to commercial.
All right, any other questions for Marla? Seeing none, thank you, Marla. Okay, this is considering the RRH subdivision to approve, approve or deny the preliminary plat and move to a public hearing.
Hi Commissioner, I'd move to approve, moving this to a public hearing on, I'll say, the condition that in the coming time between the next month here, the zoning gets squared away with Sterling Township.
So to approve the preliminary plat and move to a public hearing with the condition that it is rezoned to commercial?
Correct.
Okay.
Or there's at least forward progress.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it has been moved to approve the preliminary plat and move to a public hearing pending the rezoning to commercial on the RRH subdivision by Commissioner Zurov, seconded by Commissioner Munson. Is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, Commissioner Rich?
No, no, no.
Oh, okay. All right, seeing none. We'll move into a vote. Marla, if you could take us through the roll call vote.
The motion is to approve the preliminary plat and call for a public hearing after the rezoning has been taken care of. A yes vote means you approve, no vote means you do not. Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zurov?
Yes.
Commissioner Strifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrett?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes.
All approved.
Hey, the RRH, yes, Commissioner Bitner?
Thank you. I think the motion included a caveat at the end that, or that significant progress was made on the zoning change. And when Marla read it off, it didn't include that, and I think that should be there.
Yes. Marla, if you could make that detail or take that detail. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our consent agenda. We'll move into our public hearings for the evening. And our first public hearing is a presentation for the Arrive 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And yes, Rachel is here to give us that plan. So we will open the public hearing, and let Rachel take us through this presentation.
Okay, good evening and thank you Chair Agnew and Commissioners. Thank you for your audience tonight. As Chair Agnew mentioned, my name is Rachel Lukaszewski, and I represent the Bismarck Mandan Metropolitan Planning Organization. I'm here tonight to introduce the MPO's consultant, Jason Carby of HDR, and the Arrive 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Arrive 2050 is a major planning document, and it assists the MPOs, the local counties and cities, and the North Dakota Department of Transportation to envision and prepare for the future of our transportation systems. More specifically, it helps us use federal transportation dollars to improve the network through expansion or maintenance. We have been working on this project for approximately a year and a half. Jason's presentation will provide you with the outline of how we prepared for this study, how we used public input throughout, and what overarching goals, development themes, and grant projects we hope to pursue should this plan move to final approval. And the final approval does occur at the MPO's policy board. In conclusion, the MPO is requesting that this board consider a motion to recommend acceptance of the plan to the county commission. The MPO has advertised this as a public hearing, and I would be happy to take any questions you might have at the conclusion of Jason's presentation. Thank you.
All right, and can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we have you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time tonight. So yeah, as Rachel said, we really tonight wanted to get into giving you an overview of the draft plan content and answer any questions you have. This is a very detailed plan document, and I'm going to give a very high level of review. This is kind of an outline of all of the chapters involved with the transportation plan. And so the MTP or the Metropolitan Transportation Plan is one of the key, kind of core products that the Metropolitan Planning Organization and its jurisdictional partners like Burley County really are responsible for developing. So every five years, the plan is updated, kind of looks at trends, what's happened recently. But it looks out 20-plus years, trying to get ahead of some long-term trends, evaluate where we are from a safety and mobility perspective. This plan, as we noted, is the Arrive 2050, so we are looking out to the year 2050 on this one. But really looking at system needs for all modes of travel, you know, bicyclists, pedestrians, automobiles, freight movement, public transportation, you know, the whole gamut of surface transportation. One of the key requirements for federal compliance on this is that we need to have a physically constrained list of project strategies kind of on the back end of this. And so as we walk through this, you'll see we have kind of a longer list of needs and projects that we think are good ideas compared to the amount of funding there. So the framework that kind of guides all of this is goals, objectives, and performance measures. And this really came a lot from our local engagement. You know, we had some public meetings that we'll talk about, really worked with planning and engineering staffs with all of the different jurisdictions. We do have some federal metropolitan transportation requirements, and we wanted to make sure we did a good job of aligning with North Dakota DOT on the methodical. But really, this is the framework for how we kind of looked at problems and tried to address, you know, how we were doing in terms of addressing all of those needs. And so we had eight goal areas for the Metropolitan Transportation Plan for Arrive 2050. Safety has really become one of the most paramount important things in our industry, you know, trying to reduce and eliminate all serious injury and fatal crashes. You know, economic perspective, resiliency, efficiency, and reliability. Maintaining that system that we've got today, you know, really one of the key focuses, we have a really great transportation system. Let's, you know, keep it in the best state of good repair that we can, make sure it's forward-thinking, active transportation and transit, and also consider equity in some of the decisions that we make through this. So public engagement was really one of the main approaches to helping develop this plan. We had a range of strategies here. You know, we had some online engagement, had a project website. We had a series of public open houses, and they were each at some key milestones. We, you know, did them on both sides of the river. And so during three different phases of the plan, we're looking for issues, trying to get some feedback on different strategies and project options. And then also, as we were kind of presenting the draft plan perspectives just recently, last month, we kind of wrapped up with that kind of online engagement. But also, we had a stakeholder committee, a steering committee made up of engineering and planning staff from all of the jurisdictions, and then also the MPO Technical Committee and Policy Board. The next chapter really went into kind of the trends of, you know, how have we been changing as a community in terms of just, you know, demographics, age, housing? But also, you know, how is, how we travel? Getting an idea of what that baseline travel characteristics are for the region. And then the baseline system performance, kind of that evaluation of where we are of a transportation system today from a wide range of different perspectives. I'm not going to get into a ton of details on all of these, but when you guys have, you know, when we wrap up, you might have some questions on some of these that we can try to answer. Again, we said it was multimodal, so we're looking at safety, traffic operations, you know, trying to limit congestion, freight, making sure we have safe connections for bicyclists and pedestrians, that public transit system. And then, you know, how do we connect from, you know, Bismarck Mandan, Lincoln, to the rest of the state and the wider country? And then making sure, we talked about that maintenance perspective, asset conditions and pavement and bridges are really important. From a safety perspective, we looked at trends across the entire area, looking at the last five years worth of data. Also looked for kind of some hotspots in how can the strategies and projects that came out of that maybe address some of those more critical locations? I'm also looking at congestion, we call it traffic operations, but you know, where are we starting to see some congestion today? And as we, we'll see here, as we grow, you know, as a community into the future, we anticipate more of this congestion to start popping up. And so, you know, kind of came up with that overall summary from all those different perspectives. I won't read you all of these words, but one of the key areas that really has resonated and come up a lot in discussions with, you know, the public, with, you know, technical staff from both sides of the river, is cross-area travel. There's been some barriers to kind of having continuous high levels of mobility arterial corridors on both sides of the river. But that's one of those things that the plan has really tried to address. We looked at future growth patterns and kind of forecasted where growth was going to happen. I think the key kind of headline here is that we are anticipating by the year 2050 for jobs and housing and employment to grow by about 40% between today and the future. You know, kind of the same high levels of growth that we've seen here in the area for the last 20, 30 years. And we, again, looked at where new housing would be and also where new jobs would be. But all of that really fed kind of these estimates of how does all this growth really change how we travel? And so we looked at, you know, how traffic patterns might increase on our current network and how that might inform some of the strategies in projects that we came up with as a part of this plan. And so, you know, the plan up to this point is really focused on, you know, where we are as a system today. You know, where do we think we're going to be by 2050? You know, thinking about what all those goals are for mobility and safety. You know, what are the range of projects and strategies we really should kind of pull into this plan and kind of consider? And so this is a map of all the different things we considered. This is also in your packet. We can talk about some of the bigger ones, maybe I'm not going to obviously walk through all of them. But we, you know, we've got like a northern bridge corridor that we kind of maintained is a good idea in the future. New interchanges potentially on each side of the river. And then, you know, the idea of, as we, you know, the communities grow, continue to improve that roadway network, create that traditional, you know, that grid of having, make sure we've got an arterial every mile, kind of help, you know, support mobility and safety through the area. Pardon me. And so, you know, we've got this long list of project ideas and needs, and you know, this needs to be a physically constrained plan. And so we did a financial analysis of all sources of local, state, federal funding. Looking at the trends, you can see we're anticipating maybe a 2% growth in what we call revenues or the ability to actually pay for things. However, costs historically have been going up about 4%. And so that means really our long-term purchasing power is going down. So that really is one of the realities that we face as we do this planning process. And so, you know, with that, we, you know, worked through all of those kind of critical short-term needs, also with some of the funding constraints. You know, looked at what types of projects made the most sense for the physically constrained plan in working with all of the jurisdictions. And so you can see we've got a range of, you know, of roadway maintenance where we're taking care of the pavement that we've got out there today. We've also got some widening projects and also some safety projects at kind of critical intersections, and also some from current transportation funding sources, new trails and side pass or rehabilitated trails and side pass. And then because this is a, you know, a federal requirement, the last chapter really focuses on that federal compliance piece. And so, but again, I think one of the key things to take away here is we do have that physically constrained list, but there's also this list of things that we call, you know, it's kind of our vision plan or the illustrative plan. These are great ideas, and we want to continue trying to, you know, with the jurisdictional partners, continue searching for funding options for all those projects. And so with that, I want to open it up for questions.
All right, are there any questions for Jeremy? Or Rachel? I think one I had in here is that is, there was a, it looks like the vehicle miles traveled and the vehicle hours traveled went up significantly, is that, that is just in the, in where the, just the Bismarck Mandan greater area?
Correct, yeah, and I can share that slide again really quick. That's a great question. So there's a couple of things you can take away from that. So we are anticipating that total trips would go up about 48%. Um, and that's a combination of unemployment, um, and, and housing growth. Um, because a lot of that growth is kind of further out than it has been historically, some of those trips get a little bit longer. And so that's why those vehicle miles traveled go up a little bit higher than the total number of trips. Um, that basically means the average trip gets a little bit longer between today and 2050. And then that vehicle hours traveled is really a function of the fact that we anticipate to see, again, more trips. It'll take a little bit longer and that's, some of that's due to a little additional congestion, um, and, and items like that. But we do have some, you know, kind of big projects on the list that could potentially help with that, we just need to find, find a source.
Okay, that's why, that's why your hours, your, your traveled hours and your traveled mile, or your traveled hours are going up faster than your traveled miles.
Yeah, speeds are starting to go down just a little bit in the future, yep, no, great question.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeremy or Rachel? Yes, Commissioner Rich?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, either Jim or Rachel. I, I was at the last MPO meeting, there was a presentation about Amtrak possibly coming to Bismarck. Is that part of the, um, overall plan or is it included at all?
Uh, thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Rish. Um, the purview of the MTP, um, does typically include rail. Uh, however, at the time that we were collecting our existing conditions, um, that discussion of Amtrak coming through or, um, reintroducing passenger rail was not on our horizon. So unfortunately, in this plan, there is no specific discussion of Amtrak. Although I think throughout, we may have, you know, a, a place or two where we will plan to add a sentence or a small paragraph to indicate that these discussions are coming online as the plan is closing out. Um, so, uh, we won't have any, uh, in-depth discussion on the effects of passenger rail, uh, for our area, but we will have a, a nod to that. And in future plans, we will certainly, uh, be including that, uh, as and when it comes into our area. You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions for Rachel or Jeremy? Oh yeah, Commissioner Conley.
With the map being so small, uh, is that number 38 on there, is that the Tyler Parkway corridor?
I'll let Jason bring that up for a second.
Yeah, hold on one second. That project 38, um... Jeremy, did you get audio back yet?
Uh, yes, yep, we can hear you.
Oh, I apologize, we have another, um, Jeremy Williams from HDR is also on the line. Um, we had intended to have him give the presentation, but his audio is not working.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry for referring to you as the wrong name.
No, 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 that's quite all right, no, 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 Jeremy was, I, I did have an opportunity to actually join tonight. Um, I apologize, I, I don't have that project listed in front of me. Um, but I, I do see project 38. Um, I believe it is a trail connection that was, um, recommended, um, out of the planning process and it's, um, I can, if you give me one second, I can play with Rita along.
If I may interject, that's, that, that's a trail system along Clermont.
That's the Ducks Unlimited?
Yeah, that's the Ducks Unlimited Trail System all down in there.
Yeah, thank you, I, I apologize, yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Uh, thank you Rachel and crew for, uh, for bringing this to us and presenting it. Uh, I guess we are, uh, we're looking for a motion to recommend approval of this plan to the county commission. It has been moved by, oh, yes, yes, Marla.
Uh, we got to open it up for a public hearing, it was scheduled for a public hearing.
Oh, we opened and closed.
Open it and close it?
Or, we already did.
Oh, okay, because I just got my sheet out.
Oh, okay, all right. And, uh, and, uh, Rachel, if you could sign, if you could sign the sheet saying that you, that you spoke at this public hearing, we would appreciate that, thank you. Uh, so it has been moved by Commissioner Zurov and who gave the second on that? Oh, okay, Commissioner Patrick with the second. Any discussion on the motion to recommend approval of this plan to the county commission? Okay, seeing none, uh, Marla, if you could take us through the roll call vote?
Okay. The, um, motion was to approve the plan and recommend approval to the county commission. Yes, vote means you approve, no vote means you do not. Commissioner Monson?
Yes.
Commissioners Jarrett?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioners Strifel?
Yes.
Commissioners Zurov?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes.
All approved.
Okay, that will be, that will go to the county commission as a recommend for approval. We'll move into our next, our next public hearing, and that is the Weiss Acres subdivision and zoning change. And, uh, Marla, if you could give us the details and then we will open the public hearing.
Okay. This is the Weiss Acres subdivision and zoning change. Um, the petitioners are Eugene and Kathleen Weiss. Um, the engineer is Thomas Lashowski of Wald Engineering. And the location is being part of the southeast one quarter, section 34, township 139 north, range 79 west. Um, this project is a one-lot subdivision with, containing two acres. The zoning change is A agricultural to R1 single-family residential. Petitioners are requesting approval of the final plat and zoning change and give a due pass recommendation to the Board of Burley County Commissioners. The posting dates were in the Bismarck Tribune, October 28th and November 4th. Burley County website, October 30th, and surrounding property owners, October 29th. The petitioners approached Burley County regarding building a single-family home on land they intend to purchase. After review of the request, the petitioners were advised to plat a one-lot subdivision for the two acres they were purchasing and to request a zoning change from agricultural to R1 single-family residential. A preliminary plat and zoning change were submitted, the review committee did not find issues of concern, and the property will use an existing approach to the property. The property is currently zoned A agricultural, but a change to R1 single-family residential will be required. And the property located north of the proposed subdivision is zoned agricultural. Directly to the west, R1 zoning, south and east of the proposed subdivision are zoned agricultural. The change to R1 zoning is suitable for this location. The Burley County Planning and Zoning Commission approved the preliminary plat and zoning change for a public hearing on October 9th. Staff findings on the preliminary, on the final plat. This subdivision does fulfill the requirements of Article 33 of the Burley County zoning ordinance. A stormwater management waiver has been, um, sent in and approved. The final plat has been submitted to all reviewing entities and all concerns and corrections have been addressed. The zoning is A agricultural and the zoning change has been requested. And the subdivision does meet the requirements of the Burley County Comprehensive Plan, Article 3 Residential Neighborhoods, Objectives 1 and 2. The petition for the final plat meets all administrative requirements of the Burley County zoning ordinance. And when this was written, the stormwater management waiver hadn't been submitted and approved yet, but it is now. And staff recommends approval of the final plat with, well, there's no conditions because it's already been turned in. And, uh, petition for the zoning change fulfills all the requirements of Article 29. And the property fulfills the requirements for Article 12 of the Burley County zoning ordinances. The R1 zoning of this property is suitable for the area and a zoning change is required to avoid a non-conforming lot. The petition for zoning change meets all the administrative requirements of the Burley County zoning ordinance. Staff recommends approval of the zoning change and a due pass recommendation. Burley County Commission can approve the final plat and our zoning change and give a due pass recommendation. Approve the final plat or zoning change and zoning change with condition. Um, give a due pass recommendation when the condition has been met, which it has. Deny the final plat or, and our zoning change with reason and table the final plat and our zoning change for more information.
Thank you, Marla, is there, are there any questions for Marla before she steps away? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Marla. We will open the public hearing on the Weiss Acres subdivision final plat and zoning change. So if you would like to speak on this matter, please approach the lectern, sign in, let us know where you're from, or let, announce your name, let us know where you're from and sign in.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, simple question, my property is just to the west. And, uh, just wanted to know if we're going to be provided, uh, any, any of the documentation on the actual, um, lot plot? So we can just make sure that it's in line with our property board or we haven't received any of that information? I've had discussion with Eugene, just slight discussions, but, um, we haven't received any of that information.
Can I get your name?
Bob Upkorn.
Bob, okay, thanks, Bob.
And so from my understanding, they're going to build right along the lot line, which would be my east lot line. And just the, I think the question is just to make sure that those lines are respected. What is the eastment, we can see the eastment and see where the property is going to be built. And I don't believe that we've provided, been provided that information.
You have that in the packet, correct? Yeah. Yeah, and Marla, if you could just remind me, what is the setback on an R1?
Pardon?
The setback for building on an R1?
It's 15 feet on the sides, 40 feet in the front and 50 in the back.
So to Bob's property line, it would be?
Well, 15 feet from the property line of the plat.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, on the side.
And maybe you could, is, is the standard or the minimum two acres to subdivide? What would that, what would that be?
Now, if, um, okay, for an R1, you have to be able to have septic and it can be, it's like 66, 65 square feet. If they went in R2, they'd have to have more lots and they can use septic, so. This does fit because it's two acres.
Okay, okay. Thank you, that's it.
Yep, thank you, Bob. If there's anyone else who would like to speak at this public hearing? Please approach the lectern, let us know who you are, where you're from and sign in. Anyone like to speak on the Weiss Acres subdivision final plat and zoning change? Last call for this public hearing? Okay, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and move into action on the Weiss Acres subdivision final plat and zoning change.
Move to approve and provide a due pass recommendation to Burley County Commission for both the plat and the zoning change?
Second.
All right, it has been moved to approve and, uh, and sent to the county commission with a due pass recommendation for, by Commissioner Zurov and seconded by Commissioner Monson, I believe, correct? Yes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, oh, yes, Commissioner Patrick?
What about the, the stormwater plan waiver?
I believe the, the stormwater plan was, was submitted, correct?
Yeah, they requested a stormwater management waiver and it was granted. It just was not in by the time this went out.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Marla. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will move into a vote and Marla, if you could take us through a roll call vote? And this is on the Weiss Acres subdivision final plat and zoning change.
The motion is to approve the plat and give a plat and zoning change and give a due pass recommendation. Yes, vote means you approve, no vote means you do not. Commissioner Jarrett?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Monson?
Yes.
Commissioner Zurov?
Yes.
Commissioner Strifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yeah, yes.
All approved.
Okay, the Weiss Acres subdivision final plat and zoning change, uh, has been approved to send to the county commission for approval. We will move into our third public hearing and that is to amend Article 8 to include Section 29 solar farms. And Mitch, if you could take us through the details of this?
Good evening, Commissioners, Chair Agnew. I'm back.
Good to have you.
We are here tonight, uh, to, before we open the public hearing, we're here tonight to discuss, first off, the solar, um, Article 29, uh, Section 8, Article 29 for the, for the solar farms. Uh, this section will allow, uh, the development of onsite renewable energy systems. Uh, example of accessory use in a, and just, in any district and then a solar farms within an ag district. As you recall, last time we had this meeting, uh, discussion, we had comments from Greg, uh, uh, Greg Owens with CEC. And he had about five, five changes that he wanted that, that, that I have incorporated into this, into the ordinance. And I sent that to him and he sent an email back saying it looks good to him, so. His concerns have been met. This nine-page ordinance, um, basically is, is outlined the same, same way that it was. I haven't changed anything, I did add some extra definitions, but it's basically the same as what was presented to you prior to the public hearing. There are, um, examples of some information necessary to, to evaluate a project. Basically are in this, they are in this ordinance. And I can go by them item by item. Um, for solar, for information necessary to evaluate the impacts of a project, uh, there are part of this ordinance. The first one is a detailed site plan, which is in Section 2.4.1. Next one is the haul road, um, which would not be required or traffic impact study unless you thought it was necessary. Um, but solar farms are not a real active, um, impact on the community. They're just, they set up these eight-by-four panels and let them sit. Uh, emergency response plan would be, uh, reviewed by the emergency manager. That, that's provided by the developer, we don't, we don't write it, they do. Um, manufacturer equipment specs are in Section 2.8.1.1. No noise impact study, um, there's no, there's no need for an evidence of a land control. Uh, evidence of, uh, electric utility approved signed power purchase agreement is in Section 2.8.1. Which basically means that they'll, they have an agreement to sell this electricity back to the companies. Uh, impact of water and electrical needs are, uh, in Section 1.1.1. Siting and performance standards and the zone codes are in Section, for allowable zones, approval process is in Section 1.1 and Section 2. Minimum section, uh, minimum setbacks from occupied structures, uh, assembly uses are in Section 1 and 2. Road use agreements not necessary, decommissioning plan is in Section 2.6. Um, we, we will require a bond, um, from the owner. Basically, that's the, an engineer's estimate times two of the value. Time frame for substantial performance, uh, that is already in. Timeframe for substantial performance, that is already in Section 8. It takes, if you, if we have a special use permit come to you for approval, and it is approved by, eventually by the county commission, they have two years to enact that permit. After two years, it falls off. Shielded light, lighting glare is in Section 2.8. G. Control of noxious weeds are in Section 2.8. D. The screening and landscape buffers are in Section 1.3. E. That's basically the nutshell of this ordinance. I don't know if you want me to go through each nine pages of it. I certainly can if you want. The tax impact of this is, is just on the real property. The equipment, the, the infrastructure is not, the panels, that sort of thing are not taxed.
Are there any questions for Mitch?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes. Commissioner Munson?
Mitch, just real quick, why would a solar farm be agricultural? To me, that's commercial. You're, you're creating a farm to sell this energy back. Or industrial.
Or industrial. I don't, I, the only thing that solar farms impact in general are the light glare, the weeds. And they basically remove agricultural property from use. That's, those are the, the high-impact things from solar farms. I thought it was a good fit for ag because it's, these are large. These are five acres, 500 acres. The one in, in, not Ellendale, the one in Richland County. That's a 300-megawatt farm, and it's large. And took over 500 acres there. And so that's why, if you're going to take out commercial areas for that minimal use, I think it'd be too expensive myself. I'm, I'm, they don't need, they don't need access to it. They don't need any kind of a commercial highway. They don't need paving. They don't need anything. Just to set up these panels out there and go to it.
Just a question.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't even consider it being in commercial. I don't, I think it would probably, it would probably price these projects out of, out of existence for.
Yeah, Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Conley.
Well, when I looked at it, and you kind of hinted at it and things, since there's not concrete, if the farm's not successful in that, there's not a lot of removal, there's not a lot of reclamation. So it can go back to agricultural pretty quickly. Where other forms of energy, where there's a lot of infrastructure, like concrete and the ground and things, doesn't easily return back to that, from what I've seen.
There are, yeah, Commissioner Agnew, Chair, Commissioner Conley, there, there are foundation requires for some of the equipment. If it's too, if it is too heavy and that sort of thing, they have to have engineered design for that. And in part of the, as part of the decommissioning plan, that stuff has to be removed.
Yes, I, I think the way that I, I read it here is that it's, it's full removal, not a, not a, you can't leave anything.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, Commissioner Rich?
Mr. Chairman, Mitch, I'm just, you, you mentioned the tax consequences. So if I have 20 acres of land that's zoned agricultural, and I'm paying $300 a year taxes, but if I put a million dollars with the solar panels on it, I still pay the same property tax?
From what I understand, equipment's not taxed.
Is that considered an improvement?
Building is, but not, not the equipment. You're not taxed for your tractor.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
I don't think so.
Yeah, Commissioner Bitner, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think we're going to want the Burley County Tax Director to weigh in on that before it gets to the county commission. We'll, we'll carry that conversation on another day. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mitch? Uh, yeah, Commissioner Conley?
Two things. With what Commissioner Bitner said, watching the special meeting that you had, I guess the question would be also is that, after it's all established, can they choose that, because their production was less, that their valuation be dropped during a year? If you can carry that question as well. And then the other portion is, is just right in the second, or this second line under the Section 29 solar system, says Burley County supports. Would the wording be better off be saying, "will consider to support"? Because then it's a case-by-case project that would come in front of planning and zoning and the county commission.
I'm not sure if that's necessary. I haven't heard any opposition from anybody on support or opposition to solar farms. It's, we, as part of zoning, we have to allow them. We have to allow them somewhere.
I agree. I agree with Commissioner Conley. I don't like that word "support" in there either. I think "allows" or some, because we didn't take a vote, and Burley County didn't say that they support the use of solar collection systems.
So the wording you're, you're thinking it should change to is?
Well, I just put in there, "will consider to support", because it's just like on a case-by-case basis, every time a plat's changed or a zoning changed, it comes in front of here. And then you're making a decision, just like the truck stop in Sterling. It's still coming in front of here. There's not guaranteed support until it comes in front of the boards.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
This board doesn't consider policies, and that's what this is, policy. And I can certainly ask the county commission if they support these. But I haven't heard any opposition from it. It's.
Well, if I overstepped, I apologize.
No, I, it's, it's a good point. It's, it hasn't been, this has been presented to you before, and it hasn't been discussed in that manner, so, certainly.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Bitner?
Thanks for that good question. Mitch, if you wouldn't mind, we will want to talk about that at the county commission level. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mitch before we open the public hearing?
Just have a question.
Commissioner Jarrett, yeah.
Sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
On the bottom, on the footnote here, it says Article 8, Section 30. We're talking Section 29, correct?
Yeah, that's a mistake on that foot, on the, yeah, on the bottom.
Sorry, but I was looking through the bottom, and I was getting a little, thinking I was in the wrong section, so.
Yeah, no, too many ordinances going on.
Good catch, yes. Any other questions for Mitch before we open the public hearing? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Mitch. We will open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this matter of the amendment to Article 8 to include Section 29 of solar farms, please approach the lectern, sign in, tell us where you're from. And you may speak at this public hearing. If anyone would like to speak at this public hearing regarding the amendment to Article 8, please approach the lectern. And final call for this public hearing, if anyone would like to speak, please do now. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing on amendment, to amend Article 8 to include Section 29 solar farms into. Yeah, and anyway, any, is there any action on this amendment?
Request, Mr. Chair, the request to move it to the second hearing. We have, we'll have two public hearings on this.
And will that second hearing happen here or at the county commission?
No, here.
Here, okay. Thank you.
Well, the thing that I've, did not include or, or consider to conclude, and I think maybe this, it could be on the, on your, on the next one, is that there, there's no permitting costs on this. The, the only other solar farm that I know of, that, well, that I have information on, is the one in, in Richland County. And that, that was, the 300-megawatt project was, they based the $200 per megawatt for, for a fee.
What is our, what is our fee schedule for permits for other alternative energies, say, wind towers? Do you recall that offhand? But we, there is one.
There is one, yeah.
Okay. Marla, you got that?
On the wind towers, when they were being looked at, this most recent one, they required a special use permit, and it was $300 for the special use permit.
Per permit. Okay, it didn't, it didn't reflect megawatt. Okay.
No, it's just per permit.
Gotcha. Yeah, Commissioner Rich?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. So what about the wind towers? Do we assess them differently than solar panels? I mean, if a wind tower costs $2 million to put up, is there taxes associated with that?
That, yeah, that's a good Al Whitmer question.
I guess the, the question you're asking is that, is that a, is that an improvement to the land, right? Because what you're asking, right?
If I put up 10.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Bitner, yep.
That's a good question. Yes, they are taxed. And that's why we will want to talk about that at the county commission level, if we don't include that in the next public hearing here. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so we've closed the public hearing. Is there any, any action that we would like to take on the amendment to Article 8 to include Section 29 for solar farms? I think the, the recommended action is to move to send this to a second public hearing.
Also move second.
Okay. It has been moved by Commissioner Rich and seconded by Commissioner Conley to move this amendment of Article 8 to include Section 29 solar farms to a second public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Commissioner Bitner.
Yeah, I think if Mitch could draft up a couple of the changes that we kind of referred to here for consideration at the next public hearing, that would be helpful. Specifically, the, the question brought up by Commissioner Conley, and then the property tax issue that we, we've discussed, both between Commissioner Munson and Commissioner Rich.
And I believe, and I believe permitting costs, correct?
That too, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so we can, we can include that in, in changes prior to submitting it to the county commission.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. Marla, if you could take us through a roll call vote?
Okay, the motion is to call for a second public hearing on Article 8, on section on solar farms. Just a side note here, on our notes, it says Section 29, but it will be put in the ordinance as numerically. So we had Section 28 is agritourism. This one would now be Section 28, and when agritourism is approved, it will fall in right behind there. So on the agenda, I didn't put that.
No, thank, thank you for pointing that out, Marla.
You know, so, just a note. Okay, the motion is to approve it, solar farms, for a second public hearing, and no vote means you do not. Commissioner Bitner?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Zurov?
Yes.
Commissioner Strifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrett?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes.
All approved.
All right, it is approved to send the amendment to Article 8 to include Section, Section 29 at this point, of solar farms, to a second public hearing. We will move on to our fourth public hearing of the evening, and that is to amend Article 8 to include Section 30, data centers. This Article 8 is getting some work over tonight. Mitch, if you could take us through the details on this one?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, yeah, the, this is similar to what, what was presented to the county commission earlier to, to allow it to go to a public hearing. There were some changes that, at the last meeting, where there were suggested changes, which was to remove the one-mile distance, which I did. I reduced it to a half a mile, but I did increase the decimal level. So it's, it was kind of a compromise. The idea is that, well, data centers are, they can be challenging. The, to standard planner models and to future, especially to future land use maps, because they're going to, they're so large. The one in Ellendale is 600, well, not counting all the, the metal buildings. The, the concrete tilt-up building is 650,000 square feet. And they're, they're projected to create, require 835 megawatts, 835,000 megawatts of power a year. So these things are, these are industrial challenges to our zoning. And they can be, they, whatever, if ever we do have an application, it's going to be controversial, I'm afraid, so. We have to be careful on this.
No, Mitch, Mitch, you called out the, just the, the size of this. What is that in estimate that you have heard for workforce?
I don't, I can get that information.
Maintain and things like that?
It's mostly maintenance.
Okay.
Yeah, there may, may have a couple of tax, but it's mostly a building maintenance.
I mean, I, I mean, if we ever did have a, an application, I'm sure that would, would come up. I just wanted to think about, you know, what does this represent?
Sorry, I think it was 35 people that were going to work at that Ellendale.
Okay.
And most of them, like I said, are, this is according to the emergency manager that I've talked to out there, that, you know, besides the construction, the temp, I'm not counting the temporary workers. So, yeah, it's, it's not a, I mean, they'll have, I'm sure they'll have some tax there. But, you know, data center, the facilities, they just, they basically house IT infrastructures, but they're not limited to computer systems, network servers, applications, appliances, services, and other associated components of the facility used for remote storage, processing or transmission of digital data, associated computer systems, network servers, applications, appliance services, and other associated components. There was discussion at the last meeting, the difference between crypto data, the data mining, and the data centers. To me, it's all infrastructure, IT infrastructure, and massive amount of that. And what, this ordinance, there was also discussion about the smaller size, like the ability to have a much smaller scale data center in a commercial zone, or even in a residential area. This, this ordinance does not address those. We, this is a nine-page ordinance, and it's, we kind of want to keep it as simple as we can. This is more of the large-scale data centers. I have some information necessary on this here.
And it, and from what I read in here, Mitch, this would, this would have to be zoned industrial. Is that, am I reading that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
As, as the way it's written in here, yeah.
Yeah, and that's the problem. That's the problem that we have as, as, as a planning model. These, we're going to plunk this huge structure in the middle of, of somewhere, and it's most likely will be in an agricultural area, because these are large-scale, a lot of, lot of area, a lot of land that they've got to have for this kind of thing. And the idea is that it's, it's just challenging. They're going to be controversial. And so the idea is that we're going to try, with this, with this ordinance here, we're going to try and detail with the information necessary to, to eliminate this controversies and this, this concerns for life safety and, you know, the welfare of, of Burley County people. So the first one is the detailed site plan. That's in Section 1.1. D. And the second one is a traffic impact study. That's to, to be determined by the county engineer if we need one. The emergency response plan, again, that's provided by the owner. The manufacturer equipment specification is in Section 1.1. I. Noise impact study is in Section 1.1. C. Evidence of land control, lease agreements, et cetera, Section 1.1. A. Evidence of electrical utility approval, signed purchase agreement by the power companies is Section 1.1. J. Impact of water and electrical needs is in Section 1.1. B. The siding and standards in the zoning code are in Section 1.1, and then Section 1.1. G. The minimum setbacks are in Section 1.1. E. Road use agreement is in Section 3.10. The decommissioning plan, reclamation bond, is in Section 4.1. And the timeframe for substantial improvement, again, is in Article 8, the two-year. And the timeframe for substantial improvement, again, is in Article Eight, uh, the two-year maximum length of application time. Shielded lighting is in Section 3.8, and the landscape buffer is in Section 3.6. Permitting requirements for this are gonna be vast, and so it's, uh, the building, all data processing and storage is contained within the building. They must be contained within the building. Can't have anything outside of the building. Written verification, verification submitted by the utility companies providing sufficient capacity available. That's the problem with these ones in the other parts of the country where they have affected the electric to, uh, cause rate, rate increases for the neighboring properties, neighboring towns. Facilities equipped with environmental controls to maintain proper conditions. Applicant must provide any additional materials, uh, relevant to the application. That's basically, if we think of something besides what's in this application, we can re-ask or require. The application varies the time of application. All required county code of ordinance will be met during the operations. And, um, as necessary from the, um, the, sorry, will be met during operation as measured from the property line. This is basically that sound, uh, study, decibel level study. It's, um, uh, this, the one in Ellendale has a soundproof, what is called a soundproof screen. It's a 40-foot, um, uh, geotech fabric or anything. I, I haven't seen it. I haven't, I haven't looked at it, but I talked to the, uh, emergency manager. It's a 40-foot, basically, screen barrier that's attached to a, a metal frame. And you ca, it basically is designed to stop any sound from that property. And so it's loud, very loud inside there.
On, uh, in the design standards, uh, I, I, I think the, the half-mile, to me, makes sense. And here, the, um, and it, and it kind of calls out, you know, from multifamily or dwellings and single-family, multifamily homes. And it says measured, measured from the nearest property line. So just to put that in my head, uh, basically, you would have to have, you'd have to have a data center. If you were gonna have one, you would have to buy a full section of land and plop it in the middle of the section, correct?
Yeah, they own all that land.
Because we're talking about as measured from the nearest property line. So that's a half-mile from the nearest property line of any one of those called-out things, not the actual building. Or am I reading that wrong?
Which section are you in?
On three design standards, number one. So it says as measured from the nearest property line to any of these sensitive properties. Am I, am I interpreting that incorrectly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so it would be.
That was reduced from a mile.
Right. But as, as the property of something that this, this data center would sit on, that would mean that a half a mile from the edge of that data center building to the nearest building, or it's as measured from the nearest property line? I don't.
Well, it's, I mean, you have the property line of, of the data center.
Yep.
And the property line nearest of any of the ones that are listed in there, basically.
Okay, so it's not.
If it's a house, if it's a farmstead.
Right.
Here's the, it, the data center's over here. It's a half a mile to that nearest farmstead. That's where you would measure it.
Okay, I, I was just getting, I was getting thrown off with the, the call-out of the property line of any of these properties. So it's not necessarily from the building to building. It's from property line to the, the data center.
To the nearest one within a half a mile.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Commissioner Bitner.
I'm not quite sure I understand that, because with your, your question, I, I think you're, you're right. Because if you, if you purchased a section of land and just put a little, uh, shed in the middle of it, it'd be really difficult to be a half-mile away from the nearest property line. I, I understand the question. So I don't, I think we gotta be pretty careful in that wording right there. I think that was a good catch on your part. Thanks.
Well, how would you read it?
I, I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
I'd have to re, re, start over.
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to take a little closer look at that, because I didn't catch that in, in the original thing. I think we can deal with that in the, in the next meeting.
Uh, any questions? Uh, yeah, Commissioner Munson?
Just a, a clear, or a, a question. This is first reading, so we'll have a second reading on this one as well. So, okay.
Yeah. Uh, Commissioner Rich?
Mr. Chairman, I think you're absolutely right. I think a half a mile from a single-family dwelling, or a school, or a church, or synagogue, makes sense, but not from a, not from a property line. Because the property line might be a long ways away from the dwelling.
No, I didn't, no, I, I also would kind of counter that of saying that, well, if we say property line, then if you, if you take into account whatever the setback is, that would mean that, um, we would wanna keep it so that that person, if they say they had a, a building in the middle of their property, and they wanted to build right up to the setback, that there's still a half a mile. So I think something, I'm not exactly sure how to word that, but kind of thinking about like future, someone building, uh, something on their, on their land in the future. Yeah, Commissioner Munson?
Well, let's think about the one in Ellendale. You know, you were talking about how massive this facility is. So when you go from the outside building of that structure, and you read this, number one, that structure has to be a half a mile from the property line of that dwelling. And, and the city of Bismarck will do the same thing. Uh, I'll put a sign up that has an electronic message center. That sign is measured from that point of the sign to the property line, not the dwelling. So I think the property line is important, because again, you, like you said, that, that 20 acres may be empty, but after the, the data center goes in, they could build a house 15 feet from the.
Right.
Property line, you know, so you, you, I, property line is important to be in there.
Yeah, this, um, Mr. Chair, this was reduced from, oh, the one mile to a half mile from the last meeting. They thought that that one mile distance was too far. And that's fine, we, and, but I did also, you see in sec, in, uh, item seven, redo, I did drop the, the decibel level to 75.
Yeah, and I, and I think that makes sense.
Right.
And I, I just, I just wanna get kind of a clarification, kind of put in my head of, uh, kind of what would it be an example of that? And, uh, it does, it doesn't seem quite as clear as maybe it needs to be. Uh, just when I, just kind of when we think about that, like you say, the property line, if you're gonna build right in the middle of a section, which is a mile by a mile, so you're in the middle, but the edge of your building isn't gonna be right there. So, um, you know, however.
What building? Data center?
Uh, of the data center, to, to.
Well, that's how it's measured. It's measured from the data center, not the data center's property line, not a section line. It's measured from the building itself.
Yeah.
I don't know, we, I can, I can work. Yeah, I, I, we'll, we'll, we'll wordsmith this a little bit.
So it would really be, uh, it would be a half a mile plus 15 feet.
There you go.
It's really about what it turns into. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, Commissioner Strifel?
While we're talking about distance, I maybe missed this when you were talking about changing the mile to a half a mile. Did the three miles between data centers, did that disappear?
Yeah, yeah. And to that question, um, they would have to be rezoned industrial. So it could be the creation of an industrial district, if we're not separating these buildings by one mile.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner Munson?
We, we had a subcommittee meeting three weeks, four weeks ago, and, and we kind of talked in that meeting that if, if we're gonna have data centers, would it be better to have them three or four or five close together so that they're affecting one another, rather than having one every three miles? And having, you know, the, the infrastructure that these folks are gonna need just for electrical coming in, if you brought it to one point, that made more sense than bringing it to three or four points.
So if we're gonna have them, maybe a better idea to concentrate them in one area.
Yep.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, yes.
One more question for Mitch, and, and again, wordsmithing in, in here when I was reading through this. In one area, we talk about having to have written verification submitted by the utility provider, uh, for their power, but in another spot, we must have a copy of a signed electrical power purchase agreement. Saying the same thing, but two different ways, or are we?
Well, the copy of that agreement, it would be vital for our review.
Well, absolutely.
As documentation of it.
Yep. But if they're in the process of coming to this board for a review, for a permit, they're not gonna have a signed purchase agreement yet for that power, but they certainly should be able to have a verification from the power company that it's available.
That would be pre-application? That would be review of the special use permit, and then, then they, we'd go through the approval of that permit. And we also go through the construction of that permit. So all these things would be required.
Different stages.
Stages, right.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, Commissioner Bitner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, along those lines, um, in that committee meeting that, where you're talking about that, did you have, um, any of the electrical providers in that meeting?
Mr. Chair. Yeah, Commissioner Bitner, yes, they were there. Um, there was a new, there was like three of the, three people.
Three different groups, yep, yep. What I, uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Commissioner Bitner, one of the things that I found was interesting. In, in, in North Dakota, we have two data centers. Uh, actually, we have three, one right here in, in Bismarck. You know, we already have one here in Bismarck. But, uh, the one in Ellendale versus the one in, in Williston was an interesting sta, uh, conversation. The one in Ellendale, because of the way it was structured, actually is lowering the local people's electric, electrical costs because of how they're performing or how they're operating that facility. The one in Williston is, is a rough situation, where they're actually increased because of how they're operating. And I, and I thought that was interesting to have two of them in North Dakota, and each one affecting the locals differently. And so to have two examples in our state, one horrible and one positive, I thought was interesting for us to be able to hear about all of that in that committee meeting.
Yeah, that's a big deal, Commissioner.
Yep.
Yeah, Commissioner Rich?
Just to, uh, add to what Commissioner Munson said was, the Bismarck one really doesn't make any noise. So the 75 decibels is, is pretty significant. So, and it sounds like the one in Ellendale is gonna put a screen around, and maybe it won't make hardly any noise either.
Right.
I had, I ran into a constituent up on, and he lives up by, um, North Washington off 52nd Street. And they've got a natural gas pumping station, I think is what he said. And all of a sudden, it's making a lot more noise. And, and, and it's an issue for the community. So 75 decibels, I, I don't know. That's quite a bit of noise.
Well, one of the examples that were given in the committee meeting is an older air, uh, central air unit. Beside your house will put out more decibels than what this ordinance says. The newer ones, of course, won't, but the older ones are putting out more noise than this data center would.
Yeah, and I think, I think a lot of it comes down to, you know, how far that can, that can carry also, so that, the really, that, uh, that the decibel is one thing, and then, and then is it the sound, uh, power, uh, whatever it is. But anyway, it's, it's more of a, uh, yes, your decibels can carry farther.
It's a constant hum from the fans.
Right, yeah.
From the exhaust fans on the building, and then to the computers themselves. It's a, it's a sound that you can't get away from. So.
Yeah.
And that was, that was the problem at, at the one up in Williston, that they had promised them a decibel level of, of 30 to 45 during their application. And it's double that, if not more. And when I talk about controversial, these, these type situations, these special use permits, they hammered Williams County, not just with, with the data center representative, but from, uh, politicians involved. From, from the governor on down. And they, they pretty much had to march to their orders, and now they're stuck with trying to fix this. I'm not saying that, that it's gonna happen again, but these are controversial. These are very huge amount of money invested in these things. And, you know, it's, they're gonna kind of try to roll over our, our little ordinance here.
That's just, I think that's a kind of resounding of just saying that, hey, I think this is good, that we're getting ahead of this, instead of having something come up, and then we don't have any, we have, we don't have any, anything to say what the requirements are. So I think this is good.
And as I said earlier, it does not, it's, this did not involve the smaller ones that were discussed at the stakeholders meeting. This is for the large, large-scale ones.
So any other questions for Mitch before we open the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yeah, Commissioner Bitner first, yeah.
Thanks. Not so much a question as a statement. Um, back when we were first considering wind turbines, I actually borrowed a decibel meter from the city of Bismarck. Um, at the time, it was the health department. And so I went around and I, I actually, uh, measured sounds in our daily life, everything from a a chain on a, on a gate, on a corral, to a pheasant crowing at certain distance, to whatever. And I don't know, maybe we wanna rerun something like that. The, the results of that are like lost to history right now, but, um, something like that for a better understanding of what that sound level really means on a sustained basis might be helpful to us.
Any other questions for Mitch? Commissioner Conley?
Not so much a question, I guess, but first meeting out of the gate, when, um, us as new commissioners were appointed to this board, I came out with a pretty strong statement, primarily because of the news flash with the Williston data center. Commissioner Munson mentioned, people reached out to me and said, and explained in pretty significant detail that not all data centers are the same. So I do think it's a benefit to Burleigh County that it is a special use permit so that that scrutiny can be there and the controversial issue. We are a very strong and efficient, um, coal mining state, and we have, we're one of the ones that are very unique. We have more electricity than we consume. So it puts us in a, uh, unique position to where we can hopefully draw the right type of projects here that do utilize those services and keep our coal mines thriving. But, um, also, uh, let's scrutinize it to the point where we're not increasing the onus on our citizens as we're measuring those out. So I just kind of wanted to state that.
Yep. Yeah, Commissioner Munson?
One more question for Mitch, and I don't know how you do it, but is there, is there either an expert or a process that you can show us how an engineer would predetermine a decibel output for a facility like this? I mean, we can, and I appreciate Commissioner Bitner's thought, we need to go around and see and, you know, measure things so that we, as a commission, understand, you know, that our phone ringing on loud is whatever decibels. But how in the world would an engineer put together a program that would be able to tell us that this is not gonna be any louder than 75 decibels? Is there something that somebody can show us?
Well, that's why they, we would, we were asking for an engineer, an acoustical engineer. They'll, they'll provide us with this, because there's, you know, noises affected by all environment and distance and all that sort of thing. I mean, the weather.
Yep.
And so it's, it's, yeah, it's baffling for me to, how you configure from a half a mile, what that sound's gonna be every day, and, you know, how, how, you know, high the decibel level, that sort of thing. But, you know, that's what they get engineers for, and then, and they'll have to pay for that study.
And, and we even talk about buffering, right? You know, so if you buffer this area with evergreens, that's gonna be different than if you buffer it with a windscreen or something else.
Yeah, Commissioner Patrick?
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
I just wanted to explain, I've worked in the noise, uh, as a noise, uh, person for the state, um, some years back. And I'll tell you a couple of things. Number one, to me, it seems like 75 might, excuse me, might be a little high, because at 90, if you're exposed to 90 decibels for eight hours a day, that you will experience hearing loss. There's no two ways about it. Uh, the normal background radio, um, noise level is somewhere between 35 and 45. And, uh, so there needs to be some consideration about that distance, uh, to be sure that, uh, anybody located near, because that, you can sleep at 45, 40 to 45. Beyond that, it'll keep you awake at night.
That's why we're here for this public hearing. We can certainly drop it to 45 if this board thinks it's required.
Yeah, Commissioner Bitner, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, thank you. I, I appreciate, I appreciate those comments, um, because in my operation. Yeah, thank you. I, I appreciate, I appreciate those comments, because in my operation, we wear earplugs on a regular basis, and I can tell you seventy-five decibels is on the high side. Commissioner Patrick is exactly correct on that. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mitch before we open the public hearing? Commissioner Conley?
Hopefully, it's the last one. But if they exceed, like say, the Williston one exceeded what they told the county, if they exceed, can there be a daily fine or a monthly fine associated with it until they come back into compliance by either adding infrastructure or reducing it by some other means?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Conley, I mean, we're, I'm not sure that we're going to be able to monitor the acoustics from a half a mile away. I'm not, I'm not sure how we're going to be able to do enforce that as well. That's, that's one of the things that are, is going to be tricky on this. Williams County was told not to enforce their noise ordinance on, on the data center up there. And so, it's, it's, you know.
Yeah, Commissioner Rich.
Mr. Chairman Mitch, I'm a little confused. I thought the seventy-five decibels was from the site, not from a half a mile away. So, you're suggesting you measured from a half a mile away?
Yeah, it's, I think it says as measured from the property line of the subject.
It's from the property line of the data center.
And, and I think up in number one, it says that they're property, they have to be a half mile from the property line. So, in essence, if you, it says property line, and then in number one, it calls out that half mile.
So, it's, I'm, I already have to get a decibel meter, and I, I don't know how to, I, I'm not sure the, the, I, I think, I know that we can require it at the time of permitting. And they have to, as part of their, as part of the special use permit, they need to maintain that.
Right. And I think it's, that's nice that it says in the, in number seven, that that needs to be maintained, because that can be, that game can get played, is that, yes, we were in compliance, and then we, and we didn't have all our fans running or something, and then all of a sudden, it's much louder.
Yep.
I think having this, having, saying that we're going to have a licensed acoustical engineer, that would, I would likely come from a noise complaint, of someone saying, hey, this, this seems like it's, it's more than it should be.
Yep.
I, is kind of about the way I read it, is that this would likely come from more of a reactive state of, yes, we could study it upfront, but being a reactive, something reactive where someone says, hey, this is, this doesn't seem like it's seventy-five decibels. And then, the, the other piece of that is that, is that, you know, it says, well, I guess it, it's, it's fine, because it's, if, if we do stick with the, the half mile, then it's, then, you know, you're reading that at a half mile. They could be, they could be blaring sound at a hundred and fifty decibels at the, at the site. We don't really care that. It's, do whatever you want. But you have to make sure that at all edges of your property from this half mile, that it is seventy-five, or, or whatever we call it out to be.
Right, Mr. Chair, the, the idea is that at the Ellendale, they've got that forty-foot sound screen. I don't know what that's made out of, but I'm sure, just like anything else, anything man-made degrades after a certain amount of time.
Right.
And so, it's screaming behind, behind that screen, you know, it's like you can't even, you can't stand it. But on this side, you hear nothing. I mean, I don't know how that's going to be maintained for year after year. But that's what they're, that's what they're putting up.
And I think if it, if it were coming in to say that you will maintain this, whatever decibel level we come up with, is that I would, I would go with more than just a fine. I would, I would say cease operation, because that makes, people will, people in businesses, I guess, will respond to that. A fine, you know, we, we might think it's a lot of money, and it might be a drop in the bucket from what this data center is actually making. So, I think it's got to, it's going to have to be something that has a lot of teeth.
True.
Uh, yeah, Commissioners Zeroff.
Chairman Agnew, you know, Commissioner Patrick brought up kind of a, and I've kind of been hearing a little bit of chirping about this a little bit. And the only issue I, I see with any of this is enforcement. How, what, you know, do we work with North Dakota Department of Health? Do they have, because the whole problem comes down to, again, thinking worst-case scenario, enforcement, you go to court, right? They can push back on it, go to court. And, you know, as much as he's a great guy, Commissioner Bittner going out there with a decibel meter is probably not going to hold up for enforcement in court a lot. Just not gonna. As far as all this talk of acoustical engineers, I spent a lot of time consulting engineering on a lot of commercial and industrial projects. Never once have I even heard of an acoustical engineer, let alone somebody licensed, somebody that, that deals with that. You know, we got Mr. Weigle with more engineering out here in the audience. Have you, just a quick question, yes or no, have you even heard of an acoustical engineer running around the state in North Dakota?
No.
Okay. So, again, to, to get anybody that is, what I'll say, well-versed in it, licensed, certified, I mean, we're, we're not talking about being able to place fines based on a thirty-five-dollar decibel meter that you bought off of Amazon and provided, Mitch. You, you can't. That's, that's, that's not realistic.
Qualifying, basically qualifying this, yeah.
Right, correct. And that's, and that goes into, to what Mr. Patrick was saying. I mean, where are these acoustical engineers? Where are these individuals, these safety individuals, that, what I'll say, are credible enough for the county as, as a jurisdictional entity to come in and say, all right, data center XYZ LLC, we are now fining you a thousand dollars a day per decibel that you have exceeded the ordinance? They're going to say, we'll see you in court.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Bittner.
I think in all cases, the burden is on the applicant to prove that they comply with the ordinances. I don't think we're in a situation where we have to prove they're not. Thanks.
All right. If there's no other questions from Mitch, we'll, we can move into the public hearing. So, we'll open the public hearing. We've, we've heard from the, the commission. Now, if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak on this matter of the amendment to Article Eight to include Section Thirty Data Centers, please approach the lectern, tell us who you are, where you're from, and sign in. If there's anyone who would like to speak on this amendment to Article Eight, please approach the lectern. And giving one last opportunity, if there's anyone hiding out there who would like to speak on this matter, please approach the lectern. If not, we will close the public hearing and move into action on the amendment to Article Eight to include Section Thirty Data Centers. Just one, you know, one thing, when Commissioner Bittner was talking about that, is that really, it's, okay, it's maybe, you know, the onus is to say, prove that you are in compliance, but I would, I would, wouldn't want to have a business have the ability to just go hire whoever they wanted, and they pay them to tell them what they want to hear. So, something, something in the, in lines, in number seven under data design standards, is that if we're going to have someone gathering data, that should somehow go against some sort of, somebody to maybe quantify those numbers, instead of just taking maybe a, someone who is hired by the, the company to, to take those readings and report those readings.
That's a good, Mr. Chair, that's a good question. I mean, we could ask for two. We could ask for two reports. I mean, we, we are in the driver's seat on this approval of this. And so, it's, you know, yeah, so, go ahead.
Yeah, Commissioner Patrick.
Well, you can't tell me there aren't people around that can, who are certified to measure sound. We might have to go to Minneapolis, but they are there. I mean, that's all there is. And I, I think, there used to be one in Grand Forks, but I don't know if it's still there. Okay?
Oh, he's about to get busy.
All right, so.
Mr. Chair, I would move this to a second hearing. We have a very successful facility inside of Bismarck, already operating perfectly within the, in the lines. And I think, Commissioner Conley made it correct, you know, we have a lot of energy here. And if we do this right, like they did in Ellendale, this could be a positive thing for us. So, I, I do support it, so.
Okay, so it has been, it has been moved to approve the amendment to Article Eight or, or recommend, recommend approval for Article Eight to include Section Thirty Data Centers by Commissioner Munson, seconded by Commissioner Patrick. And it was double-seconded, but Commissioner Patrick got there first. And is there any further discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
We have, you had some suggested changes. Do you want to include that in your motion?
Oh, excuse me, the motion is actually not to recommend approval. It is to move this to a second hearing.
Right.
Excuse me.
So, are there corrections before it goes to a second hearing?
Yes, Commissioner Rich.
Well, I, I'd recommend we reduce it from seventy-five to forty decibels from a half a mile away.
Okay. So, the, so that's, that's one change. Any other additional changes to send Mitch with, to come back to the second hearing?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would, I would like to look again at the wordage of purchased agreement for the electrical power versus the verification submitted. I want to make sure that we're doing that correctly. I have no issue with the half mile. I like the option of changing the decibels. Landscape buffers, I'd like to look at that worded, that verbiage a little bit again. Taking into consideration a facility, and I'd like to maybe even get some information from Ellendale, how their buffers are working and what kinds of buffers we can put in place.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Ellendale has no ordinance on.
No, not ordinance, but, but what they're using for buffers and how they're utilizing it.
I, I didn't see any.
Okay.
Yeah. The landscape buffers are requirement of that industrial district. And commercial districts too, if they're located next to a residential, but they're twenty or forty-foot of vegetation. And we could require that as part of the development of a, of a review and approval of the landscape buffer itself.
Okay.
I'd like to, I would like to put something in seven under noises about the, it says verification may be in the form of a noise study by a licensed acoustical engineer, including manufacturer specifications, data from comparable facilities, those types of things. But the noise study to be somehow, and I don't know the wording of this, but somehow that it is qualified by, is qualified by somebody that the county hires, but the cost goes to the business. So, I, I don't know how exactly to word that, but some, somewhere to, so that it is someone that this entity or the county itself is hiring to actually qualify what, what is fed to us. I mean, go ahead, whoever the business is, hire whoever you want, tell us what it is. We will qualify that. Or we will put a second check on that.
Mr. Chair, yeah, they, that's, it's, even in our building codes, when we have an engineered set of plans, if we don't like that, we can reject it and ask for a second one. And we can choose that engineer.
Yeah, because I really think the overtime thing is going to be the, is going to, what's, what's going to come up, of that, you know, a year down the road, two years down the road, something like that.
I'll, I'll figure out a wordage for it.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into a roll call vote to send this amendment for Article Eight to include Section Thirty Data Centers to a second public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Marla, if you could take us through a roll call vote?
So, that's all we're voting on, is to move it to a second hearing?
To move it to a second.
We're not voting on all these suggestions.
Correct. No, that's, that's basically to, to bring this back to a second hearing with those in, involved, yep.
The motion is to approve moving this to a second public hearing. Yes, vote means you approve, no vote means you do not. Okay. Commissioner Streifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zeroff?
Yes.
Commissioner Bittner?
No.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrett?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes. Each one. Uh, yes, Commissioner Bittner?
Yeah, just for clarification, I thought the motion was not real clear. So, that's why I was voting against it. Obviously, I support a, a second public hearing, but we're going to need a little bit more work on this. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, so, yeah, if, if at that second public hearing, if we could bring those, those recommended changes back in, in the, in the proposed amendment, that would be fantastic.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, just a little side note from our subcommittee that we had, in Bismarck, there's an individual that actually has a mining center in his home. And the decibel readings on that mining center are less than his air conditioner. That's where that conversation came up.
Ah, okay. Yeah, Commissioner Conley.
And it would be awkward as far as how it goes about voting and stuff, but Commissioner Bittner, I can see your point as far as time. Does it have to be the next meeting to move it to the second hearing?
Does not.
Or can we push it out a little bit further, so some of those nuances can be worked out?
It does not necessarily have to come to the, to the next meeting. I guess if we are ready, great. As we, just to, just to maybe add on to that, we do have quite a few things that sometimes there, they could come to the next meeting, but they don't as far as plats and, and, and things like that. So, yeah, if we're ready, it will, it will come. If we are not ready, then it doesn't necessarily have to.
Well, these changes, Mr. Chair, sorry, these, these changes are minor. I mean, it's not going to take a whole lot of in-depth study on it. I mean, I don't know, it's, it's up to you. There, there is no push on these. But the problem is, we do want to get this in, on the books before one of these people comes for an application.
More, better sooner than later, yes.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I can run it by Commissioner Bittner, Commissioner Munson, and see what they think. We, and if they think it's okay to go ahead and send it in for the second hearing, we could, we certainly could.
Sounds good. Okay, we will move into our last hearing of the evening. This is the amendment to Article Eight to include Section Thirty-One accessory dwelling units. So, yet again, section eight, or Article Eight.
Yeah. Commissioner Chair, the, this, this is an ordinance that allows granny flats or whatever you want to call them, accessory dwelling units within the building and as a separated accessory dwelling. From the last hearing that we had, I made some changes. It's basically, there weren't that whole lot of many changes made to it, except for the, the size, the consideration of the size of the square footage. The interior accessory dwelling cannot exceed more than forty percent of the principal structure, excluding the attached garage. It may not be greater than nine hundred square feet or less than three hundred square feet. Those are for an interior model addition to the house for a second, basically a second group of people. Units, the floor area of the accessory dwelling may not be greater than nine hundred square feet or three hundred square feet for the separated accessory building. That's on a two-acre, basically a sixty-five thousand or two-acre lot, R1. If the lot's greater than five acres, that can increase up to fifteen hundred square foot for a detached accessory dwelling. That was about it, as from the, from the last, last hearing. We, I included the non-conversion agreement that's at the back of your, the last part of your packet. This gets recorded against, attached to the title of the property. And it's just basically saying what the, you know, restricting it to that family member or members of the family. We had, we had talked about possibly renting these out later, but that was, that's not the intent. And so, these, these are agreements. They cannot, they cannot start renting them out. And, I mean, they're going to break this, this non-conversion agreement. And so, that's basically the control we have on these. But I have had many requests for it recently. And so, I, I know four or five, five people that have asked. that have asked if they could do it. And so.
And Mitch, this is the second hearing for this?
This is the first hearing.
This, this will be the first hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted, I wanted to clarify that. So, we're, we're in the, in the same boat. So, you're, uh, we're looking to have a hearing on this as the first hearing and then looking for a recommendation to send this to a second public hearing.
Right. And has the, basically, the types of dwelling unit, I included that at the end of the packet, yeah, to help further explain it, so.
Yeah, I think it's laid out very nicely. Are there any questions for Mitch before, uh, we open the public hearing? Okay, seeing none. Um, Mitch, thank you. Uh, we will open the public hearing on the amendment to Article Eight to include Section 31 accessory dwelling units. So, the public hearing is open. If you would like to speak at this public hearing, please approach the lectern, sign in, tell us who you are, where you're from, and speak on this subject. If anyone would like to speak on this subject of the amendment to Article Eight, please approach the lectern. And third call for public hearing, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move into action on this, uh, the amendment to Article Eight to include Section 31 accessory dwelling units to potentially send this to a second hearing. Yes, Commissioner Munson?
One question for Mitch. I should have caught this before. Uh, in your size requirements after your diagrams, you have listed no more than 800 square feet, but in the ordinance, you have listed no larger than 900.
Right, yeah, that was, yeah.
Did we, you, you wanted 900 or not wanted 800?
No, we wanted to increase that to.
Nine, nine, right, okay, yeah.
That was at the last meeting, suggestions, and the suggestion for the increased size to the accessory structure.
Okay, thank you. Any other question or any other, uh, action or discussion? Yes, Commissioner Streifel.
I have a question on the non-conversion agreement. Um, underneath would be like the third dot. Upon notice to the owner of the property, county staff shall be authorized to enter the property for the purpose of inspecting the interior and the exterior of the accessory structure. I don't know. I guess I have a struggle with that one. Just upon notice to the owner of the property, county staff can, can enter the property and inspect the interior and exterior?
If there are complaints and I'm following the ordinance, I don't want to go any people's houses, but if you got, if they're renting it out to another family and they got a neighbor.
I understand all of that, but there's your Fourth Amendment rights too, where just coming onto the property and inspecting things with just notice isn't probably legal.
The, uh, how do, how do we do, I, I think that's a good point, but, uh, I guess how do we do, um, inspections today? As far as when you do an inspection to, say, uh, a dwelling or whatever, how, how is that handled?
Well, yeah, um, yeah, something like this, these inspections are complaint-based. We don't just go knocking on people's door. We send them a letter out of nowhere. You want to get in and look inside your house. We are, they are based on complaints and obvious complaints, not somebody, oh, I think. No, you gotta have visual proof. You gotta be able to look at it and say, yeah, we think that there's a second family living there and they're renting it out because they've got three cars on the accessory dwelling unit. It's, this is to protect not just this, everybody's rights, but the neighbors have rights as well. Whose, whose rights are more important? We're going back to this agricultural recreation ordinance that was discussed at length. Whose rights are more important?
How, uh, Commissioner Streifel, do you, is there a, maybe a suggestion on some wording that, how we, how you'd want that worded?
I, I don't know. I guess I just have a problem with this part of it, just that, that, uh, I understand where, where it might be necessary, but I, you can't just enter someone's property and inspect buildings without, without a search warrant.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Bittner.
Um, I would suggest we would probably want some guidance on that particular question from the state's attorney, um, because I do believe there's, um, provisions within the North Dakota Century Code that government officials actually have that power.
Okay.
Great point.
Okay. Yeah, Commissioners Zurov.
I, I, I agree with Commissioner Streifel. Um, I think some verbiage change and we'll say some, uh, workaround on that would be just a, a simple verbiage change, something to the effect of, uh, the inspector be allowed onto the property. If they're not allowed onto the property, it's an admission of guilt at that point in time and done. You don't, you don't have to allow them on. That's fine. But it's, it's, again, it goes back to, uh, you know, the previous topic.
The burden of proof.
We have, where Commissioner Bittner mentioned, it's burden of proof. Okay, well, you either allow us on or we're just going to assume that you're guilty and it's fine. We'll, we'll find.
Um, I want to, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Commissioner Bittner, go ahead.
Uh, that, that's actually a good point because that's exactly what happens with tax appraisals in Burley County. Um, if you're disputing the, the property tax valuation and you don't allow, um, the appraisers access, um, it, it's going to go at that higher valuation period.
Yeah. Yeah, Commissioner Conley.
Um, just an outside-the-box maybe thought is, is that, um, if you sent a request to the owner to appear at, say, county commission meeting and things for an explanation on it, um, so they can explain it, then you're not entering the property at all. You're asking them to come present that they're in compliance. And maybe something to where if they're coming, I mean, there's a lot of ears, there's a lot of people around to hear. And then if it does have to go to those next levels, uh, there's some, um, precedence to go by on a case-by-case basis.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this is, this would be handled very, very delicately. It's not, that's going to write a letter to this, we're going to be there tomorrow, open up. This is, yeah, the, a search warrants are almost impossible. They're near impossible to get unless you have full-on, uh, criminal activity. When I was in Minot, we had, we had dangerous conditions on flooded houses and we had to get search warrants. And they were just almost impossible to get, even on an abandoned house. And so, this is, this may be a, you know, flippant way of writing that, but the idea is that, yeah, there would be some kind of notice to the owner that with justification, photos of what's going on, activities, that sort of thing, and justification of, of this inquiry. And just to ask, okay, well, you know, ask them if they can help define this a little more further.
Commissioner Streifel, or, excuse me, Commissioner, Commissioner Zurov.
Would you like a chance?
But thank you for pointing that out, Commissioner Streifel. Yes.
I, I think we all agree, Mitch, we know you would handle this delicately, but what happens in 10 or 15 or 20 years when, when it's the next guy?
Yeah.
I think it's important to protect the county too.
Yep, yep, yep.
We can rewrite it.
We can, we can, we can talk in tent with everybody at the table and current staff and everything as it is now, but it's thinking for, you know, thinking for the future. What happens in 30 years when?
You know, as Commissioner Bittner pointed out, it's, uh, you know, there's, uh, maybe some, just some feedback from, from Julie and, and staff to say how, what would be a proper way to word this, I guess.
Yep. I was just going to say that.
Yep.
That's the right way to do it.
Uh, can I entertain a motion to send, uh, this amendment to Article Eight to include Section 31 accessory dwelling units to a second hearing? It's been moved.
Moved and it's seconded.
Okay, it's been, is, uh, it's been moved by Commissioner Patrick, seconded by Commissioner Zurov, not Streifel, Zurov? I apologize. And, uh, yes, is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into a roll call vote. Marla, if you could take us through that.
Okay, the motion is to approve a second public hearing to accessory dwelling units. Um, yes, vote means you approve the motion, no vote means you do not. Commissioner Munson?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Jarrett?
Yes.
Commissioner Conley?
Yes.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes.
Commissioner Streifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Bittner?
Yes.
Commissioner Zurov?
Yes.
And Chairman?
Yes.
All approved.
Okay. Uh, this amendment to Article Eight to include Section 31 accessory dwelling units, we'll move to a second public hearing here. Uh, that is all the public hearings we have for the evening. Uh, is there any other business? I don't believe we have any other business. Um, I guess maybe one thing I do want to point out is that, uh, uh, you know, this is obviously five public hearings tonight. Uh, a lot of feedback, a lot of good banter. I appreciate that. Uh, thank you all who are, uh, really putting in a little bit, some thought into these, uh, how we can, you know, protect and keep safe and, and have a lot of considerations for the, uh, for the residents and, uh, and basically just the community, uh, while not being, uh, we're not anti-business. We're not trying to keep, uh, any of these businesses from setting up shop and doing business in Burley County. And I just want to point that out is, is I think, uh, sometimes we do get a little bit of a black eye because we are here to set regulations and suggest regulations. And, uh, regulations aren't meaning that we don't want business here. So, I want to make sure that, that, I just point that out. Is it just because we're making regulations doesn't mean we are anti-business or trying to keep businesses out of the county.
Chairman?
Yes.
On that note, I'll just say, whenever I have, what I'll say in my past professional career, uh, ever been approached about, uh, how stupid all of these regulations are, uh, I always just reply with, well, then talk to your county commissioners and get them changed because that's fully within your rights. So.
Yes, so, and I appreciate, appreciate the time. I know it was a little bit of a long meeting. Uh, so can I entertain a motion to adjourn? It has been moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any opposition to adjournment? Hearing none, meeting adjourned.